Good evening and welcome to the September 2 meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. Before we start number roll call, let me let the minutes reflect that alternate number Marcus Katkin will be a full voting member tonight. We start the roll call.
Shepherd here.
Katkin here.
Alan President.
Let's go here. Also with us tonight, we have Town Planner Ernest Creveling, Venue and Planning Administrative Assistant Barbara Irvine, James Genison, Zoning Administrator. Next item is a review and approval of the minutes from August 5, 2025. Is there any questions or comments or motion to accept them? Make a motion to accept the meeting as has written.
Katkin.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Katkin, I.
Alan, I.
Next is updates from the planner.
First and second on that last motion. Okay. Yeah, just again, I'll mention the 21st. On Wednesday, on the Sunday, when we were going to have a town center event where we'll be meeting, beginning at 10 o'clock down, which is the developers meeting and so forth, and then we'll be going into the town center itself, where there'll be another different events, table, different vendors and so forth. Just to show people how everything connects with trails and the vision for the downtown center and just an update on that. So I'm pretty excited about that. And again, it's September 21st, it's a Sunday. So we're going to see people.
Thank you. Next item is item number five, Kevin Hatch, new owner of map 250 lot 63 Taylor Highway, requesting the one year extension. Please come forward, have a seat. Make sure the green light's on. Turn it over, there's a button, it over, there's a button.
There we go.
Hello. Hi, my name's Sam Johnston. Kevin is working with me on this project. I'm the the actual property owner, Kevin's assistant. And unfortunately, he's had some prior commitments, so he couldn't be here today. So I'm, you know, I've just acquired this property, as it says in the letter. And also, as it says, I'm not looking to move too swiftly here. Obviously, the currently approved design for the site is specialized for a gun store. You know, there's some stuff there that wouldn't be applicable for anything else. And I'm, you know, I'm looking to develop this for leasing purposes, so that would be limiting myself to a very small potential market. So my goal here really with this request is just to not take options off the table, to not put myself in a disadvantaged position from the part, you know, because, you know, there are a multitude of reasons. Maybe I get in a freak accident and pass away tomorrow. If my wife asks to dispose of this property, it would certainly be easier to do in the current state as opposed to if the, you know, if it was expired. You know, there's numerous potential reasons.
So this is going to be called the Barrington Commerce Center, or is that just?
That's the entity that owns it. I don't know.
You'll be leasing it out to whoever.
Yes, and I don't know what the, I mean, that this is way down the road, like how signing the site would work and stuff like that.
Looking to do the same size approximately 6,000 square feet or bigger.
I don't know at this point because we're so, we're so early in assessing this here, you know, I, I, my background is more in the land surveying side of things. So I'm better equipped to assess the site and say, this is a good piece of land to develop than I am to say, this is exactly, you know, it's way premature in that regard. I, you know, I have little vague ideas, but nothing that I could present, you know.
Sure, as you go through the process.
Yes.
Of these folks here.
We'll be coming back, I anticipate.
Is there a motion to grant a one year extension? Make a motion to grant a one year extension.
Katkin.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Katkin, I.
Public comments. I can open the public comment.
It says so on the meeting.
No, no, you're right.
Alan, I. Sorry.
Let's go on. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number 6A, this is the McKenna Family Reputable Trust. Have 207 lot 37, 208 dash 42 dash GR dash 25 dash OL.
Green light's on.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Steve Olds from Norway Plains here with Mike McKenna. We're going to keep it really simple tonight. We're looking to do a simple boundary line adjustment of sliding a lot line 30 feet. That's a grand total of 9,030 square feet. That's being adjusted from one lot to the other lot. The yellow line over to the orange line.
Good.
Happy answering questions.
Why, why are you doing that?
The perspective, new owner would ask for a little more land.
All right. Any questions, any other questions? I'll open this public comment. Anybody have a comment? Anybody online? Nobody's raising. Okay, closing public comment. Well, is there a motion to grant this? I make a motion to grant a lot line extension, a revision.
A second motion.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Katkin, I.
Let's go on.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
The next item is item number seven, design review. Now 230 dash 4 dash 6 and 243 dash 8 through 8, 14 through 18 in the general residential district. This is a design review from Sergeant Meadows LLC. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Would you prefer that I present from the podium or would you?
I don't know. If the questions, if there are a lot of questions, you may want to look at your documents, would be easier.
Yeah, I can.
May have a principal that may want to answer questions too. Whatever is easiest for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having us. If you're ready.
Okay, just introduce yourselves and.
Sure. My name's Joe Coronati. I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers.
Joshua Manning with Notre Dame Builders Development.
Okay.
Also have Chris Lewis and Jonathan Morris in the back, as well as Brendan Walden from Gold Environmental. He did all the wetland delineation and the, a lot of the environmental work on this property. In the audience, they can certainly help answer your questions.
Yeah, just give a brief outline what you want to do and.
Sounds good. The, so as you're aware of this property, it's been before you in the past with a previous applicant, which we're not associated with. This is a new application, the new property owner and applicant. The, this property is the, the old Williams property formerly known as Coop Farm. It's currently owned by Sergeant Meadows LLC comprised of about eight lots, eight different parcels for about a total of 512 acres of land. All told, there's multiple structures on the property, mostly by Canaan Back Road. There's the existing, the existing large house. There's a couple smaller homes. Along Canaan Back Road, there's some outbuildings as well, a garage, barn, various other small structures. Property is in very good shape, probably been by it or may have been by it and don't know if you've been on it, but if you were to have the pleasure of going around the property, you would see that it's, it's a mix of fields along Canaan Back Road, a couple of small fields in the middle of the woods, a lot of woodland, a lot of trails. Great access around the property with trails for hiking side by sides. They've been using the property for many years. And it's in quite good shape. It's had logging down over the road, I mean, over the years with selective cut logging and and so the property owners came to us. They wanted to, I guess, the existing conditions of the property determine, find out what could be done with this property. So we, we started to survey the land. We've had Gold Environmental flagging all of the wetlands on the site. Our surveyed crew has picked up all the wetland flags that are out there. We've located burnout pools, stream channels. We had a complete topographic map. We're looking at a glimpse of it on there on the screen. I have the whole parcel on one plan. It doesn't really do it justice at the scale. This is 200 scale and it barely fits on two boards. With the topography and the wetlands, we've been able to determine obviously the upland areas, the areas of steep slopes, all the setbacks for this property. The property also has about a little over 2, 2,700 feet of frontage on Canaan Back Road. There's a small section of land that comes out to Old Settlers Road. That's the extent of the frontage of the parcel. We, obviously, the, on just the right side of the property is Route 202. So the property is quite close to State Road. And Canaan Back Road is primarily all gravel road. There's a short section of pavement just near Route 202, but that's it. After that, it switches to all the gravel. It's all class five gravel road. The, the goal was to start this process. We've recently adopted a new conservation subdivision ordinance in your March town meeting, which changed your, quite a bit of rules in town, changed the zoning, things like frontage, lot size. And it also changed the process as to how conservation subdivisions come before this board. So we've been reading through your ordinance. And from our read, it seems like we are here for section 6.3.2 of your zoning ordinance, which is how you start the conservation subdivision. And then there's the submission of the yield plan and the review by this planning board as part of a design review process. It lists the items that are required for submission, which I believe we've submitted all of those items. We've submitted the topo, wetlands, anything with flood plains, shore land. We've also provided a detailed layout of our yield plan, which I'll start to go through. Yes, you want me to slow down at all, but. This first plan is real basic layout of the site. This is just lot lines, setbacks in the wetlands. I have another plan that shows more detail, but the layout for this, if we were to develop the entire property into a yield plan, a conventional layout, this yield 79 formerly duplex lots, which is 79 lots. If they were all duplexes, this provides us 158 units for the property. This is not the intention to build, this is a yield plan for, for density only. And and then the, the ordinance requires us to show you that each of these lots are buildable lots, which our plans have a lot more detailed plans at a greater scale that show you basically all of the topography, the step backs. We have the upland area per lot, contiguous upland, total upland, frontage. We write in charts on different pages to give you all of this info. We also have been out there all throughout the entire property because your, your ordinance does require that we have test pits on every lot. And so we have gone around the entire property, like the back, taking the test pits. To make sure that you had tested. Each lot has a little circle. This is the 75 foot well radius. And there's a rectangle on each lot. That's a 4,000 square foot septic reserve area, which is located over the test pit set we're dug onto the park. We're able to prove out that each of the lots can have a septic system, they can have a well. And then their frontage and lot size all conform to your requirements for duplex lots. We're not asking for any waivers in the yield plan process. And then once, our understanding, and this certainly up for discussion tonight, is our understanding is that once we're through the yield plan process, we would then present conservation subdivision layout. And so we, and we have not finalized what that conservation subdivision would look like. It certainly would entail conserving large portions of this property and, and only developing sections. And we can get into that.
Okay, thanks. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question about the yield plan. I, I am not convinced that it meets all our regulations. The, what I see here is, and I could be wrong, I see three crossings over this Screw's Creek.
Yes, we do have wetland crossings. That would be anticipated for a yield plan or conservation subdivision.
You know, I think that over 10 feet wide, that should be a dam and maybe a bridge. So I guess I question whether, how many lots are we getting from beyond those wetlands crosses? Yeah.
You have wetland crossings.
And like up here where the Screw's Creek is, so right here.
Yep, up here.
Yeah.
One crossing here. Another cross is proposed there. So there would be, whenever you're crossing a stream channel, the state has requirements as to how you size your, your, your culvert or box culvert. I think you may have seen this, the town just kind of went through this, I think, on even on Old Settlers Road with a box culvert replacement there. So there's a process. They like to see that they, they rate each stream into tiers, tiers one, two, and three. That's based on the uphill watershed size that contributes. And then there's the size of the box culvert they require for, or, or bridge for those streams. And they're based on the width of the stream. And there's a little process that goes into them. We've done many stream crossings. And yes, some would have to be box culverts and some may have to be small bridges.
You know, our regulations call it's got to be feasible and reasonable. And I guess with three bridges and all the infrastructure to access those lots, I'm not convinced it meets that standard. You know, the lots have excellent value. Bridges and infrastructure to get to access those lots seems to be, to be not commercially feasible. And so I think that would have to be proved, I think, if they present the infrastructure cost versus the value of the land in order to justify those lots.
Looks to be about 20 lots, you know, at that point.
Yeah, I kind of lessen that, but lot 33, I don't think, this is going to be a private road, right?
Well, I guess that's to be determined. This is, once again, this is not what we're.
Right, but when you get to the conservation subdivision, you want them to be town roads, but the town standards and.
Well, it's going to be given a number.
Yeah.
Today, it's got to be town standard, but instead of be private, probably.
Okay, well, that's to be determined when we get to that.
If it's private, lot 33, it looks like a backlot.
It is, yes, there is.
Okay, a backlot can't, can't go to a private, private road. It's got to be.
But for the purpose of the yield plan, they're all town roads that are shown on this.
You know, I don't, I don't know that the town would accept.
These are all town right away width that you have shown. Yes, it's 50 foot right away with the.
The, the road agent commented that this would require like practically another truck. There's no guarantee that the town would accept these roads as far out. So, yeah, I'm not convinced that you can, this would be accepted for public roads. You know, you can, you can run it by the, the select board, but you know, the, the road agent, town road agent had major, major concerns kind of concerning these roads. And to the point where there's no requirement for the town to accept it. So I'm convinced you can get there. The other thing on the.
Typically, typically, we wouldn't go for town road acceptance on a yield plan.
Right.
Your plans to just to determine the, the yield of the property.
Yeah, but if it's going to be private roads and you lot 33, you can't, this doesn't meet our criteria, doesn't meet the ordinance. The other thing is it's, I don't think.
Is this the one you referred to?
Yeah.
This is about 53.
53, yeah, okay, 53.
It's not a backlot. It has frontage.
On that cul de sac.
Right, correct. I just wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Wait a second, this lot right here has a adequate frontage.
The thing that stretches over to the to the top of the. That was all the way over here. Get that little connection going on.
Yeah, but that can't, that can't be 200 plus feet. It's got to be 75 feet.
Well, it goes all the way.
Okay, yeah, I got it, I got it. Yeah. The other question I have is, you know, all this is, the ratio can't be three, can't be exceed three to one. And then to me, you got a lot of lots of more than three to one. And that's 11.2.2 parentheses four. If you notice. Those were not, those don't comply.
Also, on your plan that you have lot 24417, that should be 18, I mean, 27, not 17. And you're missing a lot above that, north of that, which is lot 24336 that should be added as in a budding property.
I didn't quite catch either of those.
24417, you say is on the west side, is in the budding property.
24417.
It's a big Y1 on the, the Y maps too. It's, it's off Old Settlers Road. It's the huge parcel of the adjacent parcel.
Oh, when we surround.
Yes, yeah.
This one here.
Yeah. That should be 27, not 17.
For the street address?
No, for the lot number. Above that, you have that whole area listed as part of that lot. Actually, there's a lot there above it. Lot 24336 should be indicated. You don't show it on your map. You just didn't add it to the plan set. So just make a note on that. Also sheets Y5 and Y6 should be reversed because they don't apply to the actual drawings. Plan set. Those are in the.
Other things to consider too is, yeah, this, this could be, it's scattered and premature. So we have to deal with that. And offsite improvements, when you're talking about, you know, this amount of vehicle traffic in back road, you know, would have to be upgraded as part of this project. I mean, you're adding is it 150, that many people? It's like 5% of the current population of Barrington. This is a big, big project.
Yeah, it's actually an 800, 800% increase in traffic than what exists now. So that road just couldn't handle it. I had about length of the road from Old Settlers at about 3,500. Anyway, we have to also look at this as a development of regional impact, let's say 36 corner 54 to 58. Locally, land use boards such as the planning board reviews and applications see as the project could have significant transboundary effects on neighboring municipalities. Increased traffic, traffic to Stratford for recreation, for example. The closest beach in launching area is Bow Lake, which is 13 minutes away from 84 Canaan Back Road. Barrington has no public beaches, as it mentions. West on Canaan Back Road into Stratford for Route 202A access to the Rochester Regional Retail probably would bring traffic there. Increased traffic to Northwood for the closest services such as gas stations, banks, grocery store, pharmacy, and restaurants that would impact Northwood. Also, you have the New Hampshire DOT situation at the intersection of Route 209, 202 and Route 9. Traffic increase of 800% getting that intersection. Other considerations, number of, that the development of regional impacts would look at is the number of proposed dwelling units compared to existing number proximity to the borders of the neighboring communities, which I mentioned, and transportation network impact, which of the road and the intersection. So that is something we will have to talk to Stratford Regional Planning about also. We have a checklist. I think we'll align with that. Next, as Ron mentioned, we have the issue of scattered or premature development. These are under zoning 14.12, page 59 subdivision regs 6.7.1 parentheses four, A, B, and C. Pages 20 to 21, 2.77, page six, and 1.31, page one. Subdivisions that are spread out lack available services, road access may require excessive expenditures for the public services, causing taxpayers in the town to subsidize us. Also, the health and safety issues, getting public responses from fire department, ambulance, and so forth, police. In this location, it's the farthest distance from our emergency services building, so that would be extremely slow response time. Also, we have access on Canaan Back Road. Also, we have access on Canyon Back Road from oh two oh two and nine. Canyon Back Road and Old Settlers Road, both scenic roads under RSA two thirty-one, colon fifty-seven, fifty-eight are class five gravel roads. Barrington's CIP, that's the capital improvement plan, looking out ten years, does not have any upgrades to this road schedule. So any burden, any burden would be placed on the town where they really couldn't afford to do anything. Road maintenance has been described by the highway department, apparently works for the twenty-sol residents, they're quite happy with the way things are. The eight hundred percent increase in traffic could require road improvements in Canyon Back Road and Route two oh two and nine. It's been mentioned in the comments by the road agent that we probably have to have additional culverts. RSA six seventy-four, colon twenty-one, room numero five, paragraph J describes off-site improvements as exactions. Could be required to bring the road up to current standards, no, no building permits can be issued until the road is completely redone. And this also passes a rational nexus test, it's required under the I R C. Again, it has road drainage updates, uh, proposed needed. See this in subdivision regulations, eight point four, page thirty-one, seven point three six, page twenty-six, twelve point three three. Parenthesis one on page fifty-six and twelve point one one on page forty-nine. Now, the big issue here are the prime wetlands. Barrington has forty-seven prime wetlands. These were sanctioned and made official by nineteen ninety-one by the Department of Environmental Services. And the following year, the town voted to accept those with the one hundred percent buffer, the one hundred foot buffer. The prime wetlands are soils that are one hundred percent, one hundred percent very poorly drained. The nine point five parentheses two, hundred foot prime wetlands buffer. The planning board may increase the buffer necessary to protect the rules of the wetland that the wetland serves. So that's also an option the planning board has to increase those buffers. Nine point six special permit for construction in a wetland buffer, RSA six seventy-four, twenty-one, room numeral two. Uh, indicates that this would be something that the town has often granted these for the regular wetlands, fifty-foot buffers. But we've never done this for a prime wetland since nineteen ninety-two, it just has not been done. We also just had, this is actually the second application we've seen probably since then. Uh, subdivision application that was adjacent, directly potentially impacting a prime wetland. Nobody's ever come near it. We did a twenty-three lot subdivision on Young Road. And that took two years of discussion with the planning board and ended up with a better plan that had been originally submitted. It just went back and forth, back and forth, and it's just something you should be cognizant of. Additionally, we have information, pardon me, I can stick this. Now, Coot Farm has done logging in the past. And the remnants of that are on the east side prime wetland, the U Shore Road going over. In the aquifer protection zone. That road is actually was a logging road that was laid out according to testimony received in December twenty-three. To carry over logging equipment. It was made principally of slash that had been laid down on the wetland in occasional log quarter running. It does not exist as a road, it does not confer any rights to create a road over that. In fact, it did require a forestry waiver from D E S to form, inhale and boy with the form number. It's required for forestry management work within or near a designated prime wetland, or it's a hundred foot buffer. RSA four eighty-two dash A colon one. This temporary access ended, the waiver actually ended when the property had completed their their logging operation. Again, that does not confer any right to create a road. To the west of that, we have a two hundred foot isthmus that connects the back part of the property to the front part of the property along the road. This isthmus. Is two hundred feet, there's a wetland, a prime wetland to the left and a private wetland to the right. Each with a hundred foot buffer, so that road is covered by two hundred foot buffers on that road. Again, that is a trail and had been useful logging and it became part of that application for the forestry waiver. I could just go on here about that, but. It does, again, it does not confer any rights to anybody to put a road in. The final thing else do this is we have steep and very steep slopes. We're required after the twenty-three lot subdivision to request that the, in our regulations were updated to reflect that. You have to show on all the roads on the yield plan that they conform to our road regulations, which are seven percent grades. You have one here where the road goes along and right in the middle of it is a twenty-five percent or greater. Uh, slope, just a large mound in the way. So we're required that the roads be shown as they comply with our town regulations. You can see that on six three two parentheses two D, uh, table one, which are road requirements.
That would be the, I mean, we're allowed to build a road over a slope that's greater than seven percent because they would be grading the land.
They could show that, but we want to see that, the cut and fills, too. That's what we had to do with the twenty-three lot subdivision. You can look all that up, it was lot, uh, map two forty, lot eight. It's available on our website, it shows everything that was done at the final yield plan, which took six months to get to the final yield plan. And some people didn't even accept it at that point, so. I know you weren't happy with it. It just was, you know, pie in the sky. Uh, let's see here, also, just getting back to the prime wetlands. They are afforded special protection by D E S, and if a project may impinge on them, a project may be classified as a special impact project, which. Gets additional looks at by D E S. And I'll go into the, well, I just described the recent one on map two forty-eight that just went on forever and. And it was two years before we got to some final conclusions where. Attempt, you know, a decision was made. So due to the above concerns, the yield plan has to give details about stream crossings, how are you going to do it? Are you going to use, you know, are you going to go to Shea, show? Um, box culverts, show how you're going to bridge it. In our regulations determine saying, you have to actually prove that it's not only technically feasible, all of this, but also financially feasible to do it. Um, which was a problem on the twenty-three lot subdivision. We also have to have the road details that show max slopes of our seven percent cut and fill details and proposed stormwater control infrastructure to handle. The new topography and keeping it out of the prime wetlands, so.
Are you reading from the, these are from the yield plan requirements of the new ordinance? Or this was the yield plan requirements of the previous ordinance that required road design and stream processing?
Just says to comply with our road regulations right in that, they can give you the information.
Normally, we do not, I mean, typically, you did not design the entire yield plan for.
Well, that's what they had to do on the other one, and that's why it took so long to do. So.
Can be done.
Of course.
The ordinance doesn't seem to speak to that level of detail for the yield plan, it provides a.
Well, I think the wording where it says everything has to be technically, technically feasible, actually. Oh, here it is here. Has to be reasonable, yeah, has to be valid, yeah. The term that was used by the Supreme Court is it feasible and realistic? In the, in the synonym for that is also viable according to the court. If you look at six three two parentheses two. Item D, conceptual lots shall, conceptual lots, we're not talking about finished product here, shall adhere to all frontage requirements. And demonstrate compliance with road standards that was added this year in our regulations. And the seven percent slope is what we have, so. Uh, you can look at a twelve point two point six, table one, page fifty-one of the subdivision regulations for that designation. Also, item C, proposed conceptual lot shall clearly show the location of all wetlands buffers. Four K areas, which you did, test pitch, which you did, uh, steep slopes and very steep slopes, you showed the very steep slopes. Our new regulations found in Article eighteen definitions. Uh, require you to cite steep slopes off also, which is fifteen to twenty-five percent. You have to show setbacks, any other information necessary to demonstrate that the conceptual lot adheres to all land use requirements, which bumps us down to D. Conceptual lot shall adhere to all frontage requirements and demonstrate compliance with road standards. And also, as Ron mentioned, some of the three point one issues that had been raised with me by some people, up to maybe ten lots were questionable, so. Board, have any more, any questions before I open the public comment? Does the staff have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
I have a.
Okay.
We have a couple.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
That was a lot of information.
Well, I wanted to be upfront right at the beginning, because this could be a long process and it's in the record that these were cited. So you were made aware of these potential situations, particularly the logging situation that took place. And the ability to use those crossings for anything besides logging at this point would require our approval to put a road in, so.
We would, we would be seeking that with.
Sure, I know you would, yeah.
And are seeking that for the eventual build out of the site, the.
Right, so what do we discuss that at the yield plan situation or leave that in the bands to be discussed later? Could be your choice, I imagine, I'd rather complete everything. And I show all those crossings, too, up to at least ten. Stream crossings, including those two items, would bring it up maybe to twelve. And there could be one or two others to get some way down here and then, yeah, we got a bunch up there, that's my numbers, yeah, yeah. Okay, please, yeah, you had some comments, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious on the timing, we've, I've been through regional impact, uh, process on other developments. I've never been through it on a, uh, at the yield plan stage, I don't know if you're. We were proposing that we would do regional impact analysis at the yield plan or once we have a final yield determined.
I think, well, I guess that would be discussed, you could discuss it with the staff and how they would like to proceed with that, I'm not sure the.
I don't think, this, not, not the, not at the yield plan, the.
Right, yeah.
But I just wanted to alert you that this, you know, in other words, you go to a certain amount of expense to get to this point. And this could be something the block, so I thought I'd bring this up at this point to say that we will be looking at that.
No, understood, and it's at the point that typically we go to regional impact, we have a lot more information.
Sure.
For the, everybody to review on traffic analysis, an actual number of units, you know, final number of units and layout.
You do an institute of the traffic engineer report on those.
Yes, we have engaged.
You've got a gauge down there already?
Uh, yeah, we've, we've hired Vanessa and Associates to. Start on this process, they will be, I don't know if they'll have something prior, you know, for the next meeting, but the. Our hope is that they would at least, you know, have a traffic memo for you and then eventually we'll have a traffic study.
Okay.
We anticipated off-site improvements.
All right.
And I know that's going to be something we'll be talking about as the meetings go on, but we, so we're not, not saying we, we're unwilling to do any off-site improvements. We'll do it, you know, the improvements that you're looking for on Canyon Back, I think, could be accommodated for the size of this development and. And how far you want them to go is up to the board. We are quite close to Route two oh two.
You're about seventy feet away from it.
Right, so we always anticipated that we'd at least have to improve up to our first entrance to the development. Into the, from Route two oh two and. And if you, you know, wanted more, that could be looked at, but we thought that the sooner we switched from a paved road back to the, the country gravel road, it might be. Preferred by the residents and the, and the board, but the, that's something we can talk about as time goes on. We did anticipate there'd be some sort of need for.
Now, the lot you're showing on Old Settlers, lot nineteen. That would be, you, you're looking to also use that in your conservation subdivision?
No, with, no, that would be open space.
Because that would potentially mean you'd have to bring pavement up to there, too.
Right, the, the, a lot of the open space layout, the beginning of this site, there's not much change you can do to the front. We have a lot of frontage on Canyon Back Road. So we're, it'll most likely, whatever we do for a conservation subdivision, we'll still have two means of egress on Canyon Back Road. And then two means of egress going into the site, so as to not have a long dead end road. But if there's preference for eliminating one of those or doing some, uh, there's, you know, there's options on how those road configurations can be handled. With boulevard type roads or, or making one, the one over the, what you refer to as the logging access could be an emergency egress. So there's some options on things like that that we anticipated. But we always did look at, our first entrance is quite close to Route two oh two, and I think a lot of our traffic from this site will most likely.
I don't know, putting the road in that aquifer protection area when it has not ever been a road. It's just, we have probably watched it, it's probably just remaining of what was there from slash that was laid down.
There are, I don't think we've done a test pit in it, but we, there are existing culverts in it, it's a little more substantial than.
Okay.
Slash, there's been, you know, they were driving large vehicles over it, the logging, they've continued to.
And they, you could probably check this at D E S, they got a, a waiver to do this. But that waiver expired, of course, at the end of, these are details we probably should have.
But just to, just to comment real quickly on, you know, one road or two. Um, you know, you're going to, the vehicle trips for this at the member views you're talking about will be over a thousand. So per our road standards, that would be a collector. I mean, maximum dwelling served if state ended, N A, you know, you can't. If you're over a thousand, you can't do one in, it's, it's just, it's a nonstarter.
But and that's why we have the, so we, okay, you're saying as we go further back.
Better to.
Yeah, and then we anticipated that that would be required and I think.
Now, long-term looking at this, you would require to set aside sixty percent for conservation land. Are you looking to connect up with Celts or organizations like that?
It's got to be contiguous now, yeah.
It's seventy-five percent has to be contiguous, yeah, right.
Right, I think the, as far as the final ownership of the conservation land, typically it, it, it goes into an open space easement. Uh, and a lot of times it stays with the homeowners association. If, if there's a way to do it differently, we're open to all suggestions, but we do, we do know Sel owns.
All adjacent, all around your property.
Properties and I think we can all kind of tell just by the layout of the property that a lot of that rear land, at least sixty percent.
So that's part, best spot for the open space.
Right, it will, will remain in open space or will, will become open space and not be developed, so I think a lot of that will be. Preserved for sure and.
And you're, probably jumping ahead here, but looking at your current plan and your current operation and Epping. Uh, there were no lot lines, right, for each one, it's just going to be open condominiums.
Just for clarity, you're referring to is the Epping development?
Yeah, present from.
Yes, yeah, that one was designed as a condominium style of ownership.
Yeah.
And.
You're looking, just to repeat that whole process here.
It's, it's not a hundred percent determined. It's, it's not a hundred percent determined by any stretch yet. The, the, um, that is certainly one of the options. Is, uh, you do allow a condominium form. Of development, um. But it hasn't truly been determined yet. We did start down that path, but it, it could end up being single family. Houses as well.
Okay.
The, um, but that in, that project that you brought up in Epping, that one, um. The conservation level is quite large. There's a lot more than sixty percent of that land ended up being conserved.
Like a two hundred acre lot.
Correct, yeah. Good, um. And it is all, that one is all private road, private development condominium, but.
Thank you. Uh, I can open it to public comment unless you, or there's more questions with anybody over here. When I say, uh, I'm not gonna tell you because this thing doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
I can grab another one with beautiful.
I thought we changed the battery in that. Okay, I'm open to the public comment. Please come forward to the podium, um.
And please be aware, we limit, uh.
Yeah, we're gonna do three minutes.
Should be a lot of.
Only three minutes.
Only three minutes.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
All right.
Very second one.
My name is Nancy Taylor. Um, I live at fifty two Old Settlers Road. Um, my husband and I live in the property that was neglected to be acknowledged on the, uh, design here. We live, um, basically on a peninsula that goes into the prime wetlands. And we have firsthand view of the beauty of this, um, area and have a lot of concerns. About, um, the development of the area. Um, I shouldn't add this in because it's going to take up my time, but the day we moved in last year. A baby deer was born right next to our house, uh, next to our deck. I mean, that's just how special this area is that. Um, you know, we have loons. Like countless deer and bobcats and owls and it's just, it's a very, very special area. Um, but besides this beautiful uniqueness of it, I have tremendous amount of concerns about. Any blockages from all of these roadways, um, that could potentially flood our property. We don't have a lot of elevation. We have Spruce Brook that's right next to us. We're surrounded by the wetlands and the proposed roadway is basically in our backyard. We can see from our back deck where that road crosses. We've seen the ATVs go across that isthmus. So if a road is built back there, we're going to have. Potentially witnessing a thousand vehicles cross back and forth in our backyard. Every day, which is going to completely ruin our quality of life and also, um, the value of our property. So I, I just, I, I can't see how that would be allowable, as you were mentioning, to be able to build a roadway in that area. Colin Williams, whose father built Coof Farm originally emailed me, I forwarded it to you. Um, saying that that isthmus has flooded before, flooded over because of beaver dams in different areas along Spruce Brook. And, um, Stonehouse Brook, so I, I feel like there are a lot of environmental concerns. Um, another thing I wanted to point out, which I mentioned in my letter, is that. Over time, you know, the developer comes and goes, they make their money and they leave. All of these houses are going to be there. You know, potentially fertilizing their lawns, adding nitrogen to the soils, um, the septic systems. All of that over time takes, has an impact on water quality and the ability of the marshlands to. Absorb floodwaters, um, and we have, um, a home down in Harwich on the Cape. Harwich, the town of Harwich has had to spend. Over two million dollars rectifying nitrogen problems in the soils and creating, you know, improved water flow because of. Um, problems with people adding too many fertilizers to, to their lawn. So. The town of Barrington and taxpayers are going to end up putting that bill down the road if that happens or when that happens. So I just, you know, I hope that you can, um. You know, really read through my letter and the, um, and the concerns that we have. So thank you very much.
I should mention before we proceed here. What is our function here? The Supreme Court of New Hampshire has indicated that we have a duty to assist landowners. The obligation in the New Hampshire Constitution, provide assistance to all citizens, including developers. Um, I just want to lay that out that. If we were to say, no, you can't do anything, they would just tomorrow morning go to the court, get an order. And, uh. We, you know, it would just go back to us with an order to proceed under the law, so. Just wanted to get that out there, the, our responsibility here.
I'm Doug Bogan, Chair of the Conservation Commission. Um, I did previously submit some written comments to the, uh, Town Planner, which I trust you have or can be available. Um, as. You know, we previously, uh, and noted, uh, back when this originally came up almost two years ago now. Um, this area, this, this, uh. Uh, region of town is the single greatest conservation potential. That's been identified, um, through the Natural Heritage, um, inventory. Um, it's also the largest open space left in town. So it really is critical that, uh, we do this right, that it, that it, uh, result in, in a, a, a. Very important, um, conservation, uh, area. And I just say, you know, not to belabor a lot of these points, but I think we, we agree with. Many of the points raised by the Chair earlier as far as, uh, following the, um. Our, our new ordinance, um, and, and certainly in terms of cumulative impact. We have great concern over the, the number of wetlands crossings, the, the steep slopes, uh, that would be required to be. Leveled or reduced, uh, impacted, um, and, and, uh. Other impacts, uh, to, of course, the number of prime wetlands, uh, in, in the area. And we certainly have particularly concern over that, that road, the non-road. That cuts through the, uh, uh, prime wetland, which is also identified as a, uh, um. Uh, aquifer protection zone, uh, so doubly important, uh, for, uh, water protection. Um, and, and again, that, that region where those two roads, uh, would go through. Uh, has been previously identified as a wildlife corridor, as the previous speaker mentioned, uh, anecdotally, there is. A huge amount of wildlife that uses that region and certainly, uh, uh, bisecting it, uh, doing these multiple crossings would. Would, uh, certainly impact, um. Those passages for wildlife, um, so, uh, you know, we'll have more to say, of course, as this develops, but. We do have great concern over the cumulative impact, the feasibility of this, uh, yield plan as it stands. And we need to get this right, you know, we, we have really one last great chance to. To, um, do something important here to create a conservation area that can be utilized by the public as well as. Uh, for environmental benefit, it's adjacent to existing conservation areas, um, that we've invested in. And, uh, we want to make sure that it, it does, um, result in something that we can be proud of rather than. Constantly fighting over, so, uh, we, uh, look forward to seeing the eventual plan and we hope that you will, um. You know, work to. Make sure that there's a, a plan that is, uh, you know, feasible and, uh, reasonable. And, um, we also support a, um, uh, regional impact analysis as well because clearly. That's, that's part of our purview as well, uh, particularly with the scenic roads, uh, that are involved. So, thank you.
Um, Daniel, yeah, three, three, four, old conquered turnpike. I'm X everything. Playing more of an X segment. And one thing I came a little late, I did not have it as a process for the scenic road. To go through, there's another hurdle for that, they can be done. But in two and a half years. Don't quote me on the numbers, roughly like, my left is something with seven million dollars. Our tax base is over ten, ten million now. And we have the Tifft district. If you have any burden on the taxpayers, I will fight you. As if, so if you want to put the road in, do, do all the processes. But don't expect the town to put any money in because we can't afford it anymore. Um, I'm just looking around.
I see knives in those books.
No, but. Um, the, I, I only come up once in a while to speak out and stuff. I don't have retirement.
The town cannot.
I know.
Responsibility for any part of this development has to be funded by.
Right, that's why I make sure, uh. I'll speak against it as well, because we can't afford anymore. Come December. That's going to be the start of it. And it's not going to get better. We have the Tifft district, we have the library, staff, and we live in a new world today. It's going to cost us. And I can't afford it anymore.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? I'm Catherine Clem of two fifty nine Canaan Back Road. I'm an area resident, but I'm here just to, um. Read some excerpts from Colin and Evie Williams. They couldn't be here today and they are abutters to the property. And so they just find, and I think we're all looking for balance here. They find the plan unrealistic and it should be rejected. Um, the plan proposes eight wetland crossings, including. Five in areas designated as prime wetlands, so he does cite the, the wetlands as you have done also for the. Um, four hundred foot causeway, you know, really concerned about understanding that impact. Over the, on the prime wetland, but also have engineering studies been done to see how far down. You'd have to go to actually create a roadway there. Um, also some sections of the proposed roads are quite steep, which you've already cited. Um, and also the single root access, um, being, um, a problem in emergency events. And there are also some, uh, on the site soil types that aren't suitable for septic systems. Especially in the area of the Paxton D soils that are steep slopes adjacent to prime wetlands. So if it's. The soils aren't good, that could be a problem. Also, he cites the concerns about the road, um, Canaan Back Road and also nine two O two. And, um, as a resident that lives on that road. You're always using the two ways, um, out, so it really is unrealistic to think just paving from where. You'd enter onto that road. I can tell you, we have both, we all use both ways. So, um. So, and I think the big impact on the emergency services, so we're just looking for some balance and, um, those were some of his concerns.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Clem of two fifty nine Canaan Back Road. I'm Catherine's lesser half. Um. I, um, I, I recognize that the applicant has said that this is just a yield plan and I appreciate the comments of. Mr. Allard and Mr. Driscoll, um, about this scattered and premature subdivision issue. Um, but I wanted to first commend the board to the letters that have been submitted by Colin Williams and Nancy Taylor and John Kerr. There's a lot of letters that have a lot of helpful information about some of the issues that really need to be addressed. Uh, and I hope that they are considered, um, but what I wanted to talk about was, um, kind of what I think the most fundamental issue here that the applicant faces, which is. This notion of scattered and, and premature, um, there's a case called Garapi versus Town of Hanover. It's from nineteen seventy six, it's one sixteen, New Hampshire thirty four, and in that case. It was an applicant who sought to put in forty eight or forty nine residences on a road that only had eighteen. Um, which sounds kind of familiar to what we're doing, although they're looking for more than that. And in that case, the court looked at the impact on the traffic. Um, and that the burden would be so high on this particular road and on the, not just on that, but also offsite. On the surrounding roads in the community. And they found that that was a basis on which they could deny. Um, you mentioned, I think it was Mr. Driscoll that mentioned one point three. One, it looks at whether or not the development would damage health or safety or traffic issues and other issues that are very important and vital to be determined. And that once you identify a hazard like, for instance, transportation. Then you have to look at whether or not. That burden exceeds what's available. This is the law that you're going to have to file, uh, to follow. And if. The burden is too much, if the burden is too high, then you have to deny the application. Um, that's what. Garapi says, there's another case Ettinger that follows it more recently, that says that. You really need to look at these issues of whether or not it's scattered and premature. And so I go back to the letters that the, these residents of the area submitted. And they talk about this transportation issue, Canaan Back Road, and, you know, these are gravel roads, they're scenic roads. Um, they weren't built to handle this traffic level of traffic. You also have the area where the Zilfelders are and the Morse family are where it really gets narrow and it's a hill. And they would have to have a significant redesign to handle that burden of traffic. I agree with Catherine when she says the cars are going to go in both directions, and so. This, as you mentioned, is a regional impact development. This is going to impact Stratford and the back came inside of this. Um, you also have the issue of.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I also have the, you also have this issue of hydrology. Um, I, I represented Seabed Groundwater when, um, there was a fight over this development on Route four. This is twenty years ago, and, and that one, so I did some math, and if you did the hundred and fifty nine or fifty eight units, which is not what's going to happen here. And if you consider an average of two point four six, uh, residents per home. And you consider a use of average about a hundred gallons per person per day, we're talking about thirty six thousand, six hundred gallons of water per day taken from the aquifer. Now, at fifty six thousand gallons, they'd have to get a large groundwater withdrawal permit. But thirty six thousand gallons is a very significant amount and you need a hydrological study. I will conclude. Thank you.
My name's Joe Wilson, seventy nine Penny Way. I think you guys know me. I, uh. Deal for the people with the, uh, animals. I have them on my land every day. And over on Twain's Lake, not. Any, they were all over the place. But this issue with six hundred, five hundred and something acres. And you can't do anything with it. The conservation is get a concern with it. They should have bought it. They didn't buy it. I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, looking at anybody. And the people that live on the road, this, these people that do, did the development in Epping. A top notch. When they tell you they're going to do something, they do it. They finish the job, they don't start it and leave. I think you guys should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Anyone online that would like to comment? If anyone's online, you can unmute yourself and speak, raise your hand or type into the chat.
If somebody walk up. Oh, okay, one more.
Good evening. I'm Michael Camir. I'm at two thirty seven Canaan Back. I'd like to talk more about the, uh, safety issue on the road as was brought up by the Clem's. Um, in the section of the road where I live, it's known as Durgen Hill. And going up from Old Settlers Road onwards is a two rod road. Which means you have a road of thirty three feet. Um, there's a pinch point at the, at the Zilfelder's house where you have a blind hill. It's very narrow. And you really have to be over on the right side of the road and be careful because you cannot see coming, anybody coming in the other direction. When you get onto Durgen Hill, um. The stone walls are approximately at the top of the hill near my driveway, about thirty five feet and down lower, they're about thirty seven feet. Okay, I know this because I measured it all last year. Um, there are trees there and. The roadway is probably about twenty seven feet and even if you widen it up to the thirty three feet you have. It would still be pretty tight. I have an F three fifty if I'm coming down the hill and somebody's coming up the hill, I'm looking at where I can put. My truck and park it and let them go through. And we run into this quite regularly. Now, you were indicating that we might have an eight hundred percent traffic increase. How many times a day is this going to happen where it's such a tight pinch point where one car has to stop to let the other one go by? I think we have a serious safety issue if we allow this thing to go through. And I hope that you pay close attention to that and address it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we have, uh, Linda Burchett online that would like to speak. Uh, if you, uh, unmute yourself. And we'll see if we can hear you.
Am I, am, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I submitted a letter earlier today that summarizes my thoughts. I thought that, uh, the chair's overview was absolutely sterling, excellent overview of all the things that need to be done. It would be wise to get those things. Accomplished before I, the yield is determined. I, I want to emphasize in addition that a yield plan needs to be financially. As well as environmentally feasible. And the costs associated with that roadway as currently proposed. Is going to be significant. I wasn't able to figure out how many miles. I wasn't able to figure out how many miles of road there is, but it'll be a very significant impact. I think that, as others says, that putting a road through the prime wetland really is a non-starter. All of the things that we've been talking about have to do with the land, with the environment, with the wetlands. And so to the, to the comment that, yes, a property owner is certainly allowed to develop their property and so forth. But that property, what you can do there is determined by the character of the, of the land. And the steep slopes to only have identified steep slopes that are in excess of 25%, is, is to me a very short sighted, given the nature. By the way, I should say that I'm in a butter with my husband. We own the other half of Nipple Hill. And when I looked at that, you know, lot that's on the part of Nipple Hill up in that corner, I just like, just even the cost associated with that would be really very severe. So the problem with the land here, the, the, the geology, the water, the everything, is that currently the number of lots and the road system and their location, that's what's preventing the ability to create, what is it, 79 duplexes? It's not all of us. It's the land that is determining how this can happen. So I think that the point for, to the developer is to come up with something that fits the environment. The environment is not going to be managed to fit the development. In my commentary that I submitted, I also had a lot to say about scattered and premature development and the regional impacts, you know, on public safety, on schools. It's not just simply the road, which is certainly serious enough. But there are other residual and associated impacts that have to be considered. So my, my bottom line thought here is that there are simply too many lots and the location of the lots.
Thirty seconds.
Not going to be able to, okay. But that's, that's, I just want to echo everybody's thought here that, that the developer needs to go back to the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Anyone else online? Raise your hand or type into the chat. Last call. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, no closed public comment. Thank you very much, everyone. Anybody on the board have some comments, final comments?
I just, you know, this is something I've been talking about for a while. But, you know, if this big stage is a private road, it'd be a class six private road. I, I question whether the select will accept this road. So it could end up being a class six private road. As you know, we have the whole thing where you have this class, only select for recognition. But it's, in this case, I think it'd be a one-time thing. But I think it's, to me, it'd have to go, it'd be, it'd be a formality because it would be town standards.
I want to jump in on that. It would not, it, it, I have to. If, if it's a road approved by the planning board, it would not be falling to 67441 as a private road or a class six. Or it'd be a
We can talk
just for accurate information.
We disagree.
If, if the planning board approves it, it's an approved road by the planning board. Doesn't mean the town accepts it.
Town attorney to grain on this. But I don't see how, we can't, we can't approve building based on an existing road, but we can create one. That doesn't seem to be logical to me, Jamie. So I
It's part of 67.
Yeah. So we, we have further discussion.
But I, I, I don't think you should bring it up in public comment then if you don't want to discuss it here in a forum. It's not appropriate.
This may be required going Either way, if you're going to be a private road or a public road, at the end of the day, the selectman, select board has to accept it. And I, I don't know that they would accept this road being that far out and given the, the town agents' comments. So, you know, maybe at some point, it may be worthwhile to talk to select board and see where they are on this.
I don't think they could comment at this point, so.
Yeah, but you think they're going to accept a road this far out basically with Mark, Mark basically said, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. No other comments from anyone? Last call, anybody? Go ahead.
If I may, two comments. I just want for the public information that off-site improvements oftentimes come with a proportional share that the town has to pick up. So if off-site improvements are indicated in this development where the road needs to be upgraded all the way to Stratford Town Line or vice versa, a proportional share would, would have to be picked up by the town. So if there's 58 homes on that road and 170 new ones go in, the town would be responsible for a proportional share and at times.
I don't think there's 20 homes.
I don't either. I think there's like 18 or so. It's just common information for people to, to know that there's, there's give and takes and there's sometimes a negative impact when it comes to those sorts of things. And then the other
Could just declare it a class six road.
Uh, I don't think they can down grow to classify road unless they haven't maintained Yeah, unmaintained. But ju- just for people's identification and, and same with traffic studies, like traffic study out here, most new traffic studies show that people don't seem to go to work. You know, so there's very low impact sometimes. And it's unfortunate, that's a kind of a, you think it's going to work in our favor and sometimes it doesn't work the way we expect it to. So I just point that out.
Because everybody was on for COVID?
Yeah. It, it hasn't been the experience yet, but, you know, and the traffic study will prove it, but it's just something to point out so people are aware.
Yeah, I think the last update by the IT was 2024, so.
We closed public comment. Oh, well, we were just getting staff updates. It's not public comment, it's staff comments. We had closed public comment. Okay, I guess we can wrap it up with you guys right now. You want to come back in a month to see if you've be able to update your yield plan to reflect what the board had requested?
Yes, and I just wanted to, I guess, bullet point. I mean, I could work with Ernie on the bullet points, but what I have written down is road grades, steep slopes 15 to 25%.
Better show some infrastructure to potential runoff. Be helpful, I guess. It might be hard to determine at this point, but
Yeah, we'll have grading. If we do profiles, we'll have grading. We won't necessarily have detention ponds, but I think you can envision.
Exactly. In the 7% would show any, obviously, cut and fill. You know, you're going to a lot of, well, I suppose you can use it in other places. But a couple of the spots that we saw, the, the road just kind of hit a 25% grade. And as you noted, that would be taken down. But we want to know what's, what's going on, right?
The
I think one lot also had a steep slope. And on the other side was the wet, the EDA and the well set, the well safety area. And beyond that is water. And we couldn't figure out where a house would go, you know, unless you took down half the lot. You know, the elevation there. I guess a lot of this would just be moving dirt around, but we appreciate it if you would provide this. And again, the level of detail here may not take place for some simple five, you know, 10-lot subdivision on sandy soil on a flat plain, but something near these prime wetlands, which are, as noted by Doug Bogan. And then there were seven, there were seven, if you go to the co-occurrence map that's in the town site of the quality, high-quality areas, there are seven of them spotted around the town. And this is number one, the high quality. And the, in the animal corridor he mentioned starts at the seacoast. Actually, there's a booklet about that. And seems to go up to the Spruce Pond, Spruce Brook Ponds in Stratford. So there's a lot of activity that comes out of these, you know, a couple of our large areas, Stonehouse Forest and so forth too. So the animals have to cross Route 9 and good luck with that, but
Across a lot of the roads, yes.
Yep, right.
That process, but the was there anything else specific that you can
Yeah, the, the, the financial feasibility where you're doing, you know, is it, you really have to prove that you would actually do a conventional subdivision to justify that number of lots before you can use that number to go to a conservation subdivision. And the other thing too, is you've got a number of lots seem to violate the three to one ratio.
Yeah, detail on the stream crossings is very important. That would be, really be helpful. I don't know if you all have walked the lot. It's pretty big. It might be useful for us to do a walkthrough with a board and Really driven down that road and I, I have an eight-foot clearance on my medium-sized SUV. And I didn't feel going, better going over five to eight miles an hour going down there.
Eight-foot clearance?
No, eight, eight-foot clearance. Yeah, it's one of those jumbo. Yeah, I go to circuses too. No, it's eight inches. Go ahead.
Would it be helpful to ask if they've talked to DOT and what that may look like? So it might answer some questions.
I would connect up with DOT immediately. And you have also the option of talking to the town engineer to explain what you would like to do ultimately on that road. Get them in early and it might help you. Connect up with them through our
CMA, town engineer. Now, you don't have an in-house town engineer, correct?
Yep, no, we don't know. CMAs are
And we have, we have, DOT did reach out to us and express that we'd be, they would be requiring us to file a driveway permit. It will be a little bit abnormal because we don't have frontage on a DOT road. So that it'll be something where we have to work with the town to be the applicant on the application so that, since it's your road, we don't have, typically when I've, I filed many DOT permits, we normally have frontage on the DOT road and we're asking for a driveway road. This one's a little different because we'll be looking at intersection design or your road on their road. So it just, it's a little bit of a nuance, but we'll we will start that process. But ultimately, we'll have to have the town sign the application to file an actual
Okay, I agree.
And I can forward that info. I don't know if you typically do sidewalks. You brought up a sidewalk. I don't know if the board's done sidewalks for yield plans or for, or if it's too soon for
Usually, once the application is filed, you know, regular applications file still.
A little further.
I mean, if you wanted to do it, that's
That prefer no, the property's posted, so I'd prefer no one just walking around. I don't, I'm happy to schedule something.
It is a big parcel. It's a big parcel. So probably a drive around would be better. We see a lot of trails here. I don't know.
Lost a track while we drive around.
I, it's always available for lease, so. Those tires are very expensive. Okay, I think we're done here. Thank you very much and thank you folks who are here for this. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. I bought the, I bought my land in, I guess, 20, what was it, 1975? There were 2,500 people in town. So my view is 7,000 people should go home because they ruined the town that I bought in. So I don't know anybody that's here.
So they'll be coming back the next
Yeah, right. You're going to continue the design review in October, correct?
Yes, please. Yeah, you can continue us to a date, sir.
Next meeting, Barbara's talking to us the seventh. Is that the date?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
I guess, right, we close?
Oh, yeah. Oh, board, I'm going to make a motion to continue, make this official motion to continue this till the 7th of October.
Second.
Seconded by Ron. It's all right, he's right. Roll call.
Yes.
Any other business, new business, any unfinished business?
I'd like to just ask eight questions.
All right, let, let the crowd come. Anybody want to take a five-minute pee break or anything? You sure?
Yep.
Because I don't mind. Okay. All right, then I'll make a, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Roll call. Okay, officially closed. All right.